Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the city council on Monday, November 24th, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. There's a motion to amend.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations, and I will begin. If those who are here for DJ Afterthought, please come forward. Oh, sorry. Thank you. I want to thank JD in my office for bringing this to my attention. As a huge fan of music in general, and as a particular big fan of hip-hop, I know of this man's work, but I never got a chance to meet him, nor did I know he actually resides here within the city of Pittsburgh. And so upon learning all of that, we want to take a moment to recognize someone who is really pushing the music industry forward, the culture forward, and not only locally, but internationally as well. So thank you for all that you've done. Whereas Ryan DJ Afterthought Haynes is an accomplished open-format DJ, producer, and audio engineer, whose career has elevated Pittsburgh's influence in the global music industry throughout through innovation, collaboration, and artistry. Whereas DJ Afterthought has worked alongside an extraordinary range of artists and institutions, including Taylor Gang Records and the ID Lab Studio Collective, and has collaborated or performed with world-renowned acts such as Earth Gang, Matt Miller, Wiz Khalifa, French Montana, Action Bronson, Diplo, CeeLo Green, Lil Wayne, Tyler, The Creator, Pusha T, Chevy Woods, Skepta, and Travis Barker. Whereas his international career has included appearances at premier festivals such as Coca-Cola, EDC, Tomorrowland, Lost Lands, and Bonnaroo, as well as residencies and shows at top venues in Las Vegas and around the world. Whereas in addition to his performance career, DJ Afterthought has distinguished himself as a producer, releasing original material, including the EP, The Underachiever, and co-producing notable singles like McQueen Dreams featuring Wiz Khalifa. Whereas after earning degrees in business and sound slash audio, DJ Afterthought began his professional journey at West Virginia University and quickly became a fixture in Pittsburgh's creative ecosystem, working with daily bread clothing and connecting with Matt Miller in an encounter that propelled him into global touring career while maintaining deep roots in his hometown. Whereas throughout his artistry, mentorship, and continued presence in Pittsburgh's music community, DJ Afterthought has inspired a generation of young creatives and contributed to the city's national reputation as a hub of talent and innovation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Ryan DJ Afterthought Haynes for his exceptional contributions to music, culture, and the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 24th, 2025 to be DJ Afterthought Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Maybe you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
I'm terrible at this. You'd think I'd be good at it. I just appreciate it. I've always just tried to do music to try to kind of elevate the people around me, and I was given opportunities in this city that I probably shouldn't have gotten or am just really lucky to. So I don't take that for granted, and I just try to push everybody here as far as I can. So thank you so much.
Thank you. These are yours. Councilman Mosley?
Will the family of Shirley Wheaton come up, please? Family and friends, everyone who came down to support. Good morning, Mama C. You're a force of nature in your own right, you know, all by yourself. So what we got? Okay. How you doing, Brother Bill? Good morning. It's really an honor to do this today. Apostumous proclamation for Shirley Wheaton, a truly force of nature, who gave birth to another force of nature in the Homewood community, and I had the opportunity to know her and spend time with her. And, you know, it was about two years ago, spent a couple hours at her bedside, having a really powerful conversation about all the work that she's done as an educator, as a soccer coach at Westinghouse, and as an activist in the community with Operation Better Block with the Democratic Committee, as well as the judge of elections, and a very powerful home-going ceremony last weekend. Thank you for the invitation. I felt it was only fitting to honor her here in council chambers this morning. So whereas Ms. Shirley Ann Wheaton was born in Cumberland, Maryland, later relocating to Washington DC, Cornwall Heights, Pennsylvania, and eventually moved to Pittsburgh. She graduated from Shinley High School and attended the University of Pittsburgh's new professional program in social work. And whereas Mrs. Wheaton mothered five children, Carol Ann, Linda Lee, Darlene Teresa, Mark Anthony, William Walter Jr. And whereas Ms. Wheaton, Mrs. Wheaton worked at the United States Postal Service and served as the SAM recruiter and coordinator at Westinghouse High School while coaching the soccer team and auxiliary bands at the school. And whereas Mrs. Wheaton was heavily involved in civic affairs in the following roles: board member of Operation Better Block, judge of elections for over half a century in the 13th Ward, Democratic Committee in the 13th Ward, volunteer with Keystone Paralyzed Veterans, and the VA Hospital in Aspen Wall. And whereas Mrs. Wheaton had many accomplishments and awards for her service, including the Shakespeare Festival Award, the PA Conference for Black Basic Education, Operation Better Blocks Community of Service Award, Hand in Hand Incorporated's Martin Luther King Jr. Award. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby, does hereby recognize that Shirley Wheaton made it her life mission to be a positive example and dear friend to Homewood students, families, and the community as a whole. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh has hereby declared November 2nd, 2025 to be Shirley Wheaton Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Hi. I'm like the gentleman before me, not good at this, but my mom really worked hard in our community most of my life. And I'm just so very happy and honored to receive this proclamation for her. I know she's smiling down on us all. And just thank you.
Will all members like to come up for a photo, please?
One more, please. Thank you. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Smith? Ms. B?
Yeah, I'll say something about her. Yeah.
Ms. B? Okay. Will you come up?
And B Marshall and his team, please come forward. WQED. This proclamation is sponsored by Councilman Coghill and myself. So I know Councilman Mosley is going to talk about this a little bit later, so, and she lived in his district, so I don't want to say too much, but I do want to say one of B's biggest supporters was Carmen Brown, and she, we just got news today that she had passed away. And so I want to make sure that we offer our condolences to Carmen Brown. I've known her for thirty-some years. We did school district stuff together. She was a, she was an equal opportunity person who made sure she harassed us all when we needed it. So, but I always appreciate that. I knew she came with a good heart and always wanted to see what was best for people. So with that said, I would just want to offer our condolences to her family, but I know that you're going to add a lot more to that. I don't want to step on your toes. Whereas WQED Multimedia, Pittsburgh's pioneering public media station and the nation's first community-supported television station, has long served as a cultural cornerstone, telling the stories of the people, places, and passions that make the Pittsburgh region our unique, Pittsburgh region unique. And I have to say, that's really true. My family is part of the, you did the Wally Avenue days, and my family's part, but they cut my aunt out because she cussed too much. Whereas on September 20th, 2025, WQED received a Mid-Atlantic Emmy Award for Pittsburgh Soul Food and Original Documentary, celebrating the rich culinary heritage, community spirit, and deep cultural roots of Pittsburgh's black community. And whereas inspired by William B. Marshall and his annual Soul Food Festivals, the film explores the deep regional roots of soul food through the insights from Samuel W. Black, Director of African-American Programs at the Senator John Hines History Center, and visits local restaurants where food brings people together across cultures. And whereas Pittsburgh Soul Food highlights how food connects generations, serving as both nourishment and storytelling, linking family, history, and identity through powerful narratives that uplift and inspire. And whereas this recognition reflects WQED's ongoing commitment to inclusive storytelling, community engagement, and journalistic excellence, continuing a legacy that began in 1954 when WQED first went on the air as the nation's first, first public television station. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize WQED Multimedia for its Emmy Award-winning production, Pittsburgh Soul Food, commending its dedication to preserving and sharing the stories that define our city. And, do you want to read this part? Just the last one.
And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 24th, 2025 to be WQED, WQED Pittsburgh Soul Food Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say, WQED, Aunt B, and your lovely wife, Margot, I am honored to honor you. You've become one of my favorite people. The energy and the time you put into whether it's the Soul Festivals, whether it's Juneteenth, and the economic impact that it has for the city of Pittsburgh is contagious. So thank you for all you do, and again, I'm honored to honor you today.
I just want to thank Mr. Marshall for being the inspiration for this story, the great team at WQED, including producer Natalie Berry, who made the stories come to life, the great people in the restaurants that we went to that shared the amazing food with us, and the people of the city of Pittsburgh who continually welcome WQED and make us know that this is the best place to be a public television station. Thank you.
Two words. So we started the Soul Food Festival in 2019 after we learned about the rich cultural heritage of Pittsburgh and the people that started food in our region. We were just dumbfounded to find out in 1788, a gentleman called Benjamin Richards started the first butchery here in the city of Pittsburgh. So that's our inspiration for the Soul Food Festival. Thank you all.
Yeah, do you want to say something?
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to congratulate Mr. Marshall for all the work that he's done to educate folks about our rich culture. It's something that's important to me. As many people know, my father is a walking encyclopedia of black history of Western Pennsylvania, and he poured all that into me. So I truly appreciate all the work you do, and kudos, and continue to do the good work you're doing, brother.
Any other members want to say anything? Okay, I just, you want to join us for the photo? I do want to thank B and his wife for everything that they do for the city of Pittsburgh, but WQED, I can't imagine Pittsburgh without WQED. They're synonymous. So thank you very much for all you do. Thank you. Hey, wait, we're going to take a photo. We'll get, yeah, can you ask Lori? Let's ask her. I'll ask her. Lori will get you extra copies. Well, Richard. Richard and Francis, please come forward. The West End and District 2 in general is getting to have a tremendous amount of artists in our district, and we're so grateful for what they do in our area. But they bring something unique. They became not just Richard and Francis, a thought robbers in West End on South Main Street, not only became part of the art community, they became part of the community. They call him the mayor of the West End now. But I just want to say thank you for all that you do, because you didn't just move in and just to take care of your business, you moved in and took care of the community. So thank you very much for everything that you do there. And we actually have some more art galleries opening. We have James Gallery, which was the first to invest in the West End, has been there for a long time, we have your gallery, and now John Ross in the media room is now opening up in Elliot. So I'd love to see this art collaboration coming together in our district. So thank you. Whereas founder Richard Johnson and Francis Niznick, Niznick Thought Robbers Gallery began in 20, in 2010, in a ten-by-ten foot space in Las, at Las Vegas's Emergency Art Co-op. The gallery provided a vital platform for local artists through rotating exhibitions every first Friday until 2015, quickly becoming a creative hub. And whereas in 2020, Richard and Francis reintroduced Thought Robbers Gallery to Pittsburgh's West End Village. And whereas it has since showcased the work of more than forty local artists, offering visibility, opportunity, and an inclusive environment for emerging creatives. And whereas today, the gallery continues its mission in collaboration with the Oaklander Hotel, curating monthly exhibitions on the hotel's 10th floor and bringing local art into new and welcoming spaces that connect residents, visitors, and artists alike. And whereas Thought Robbers Gallery is more than a venue, it is a true community partner. The gallery actively participates in neighborhood and citywide events such as Pittsburgh Musical Theaters Dancing in the Streets, and supports nonprofits, including SALT, which is Sister Mary Save a Life Today Program Foundation, and the Emma Munson Foundation through volunteer efforts and artist engagement. And whereas this season, the gallery expanded its outreach by partnering with the Oaklander Hotel, Out of the End Incorporated, and Farmer Girl Eb to collect children's coats and boots, helping local kids living with sickle cell disease stay warm this winter. And whereas the Johnson-Niznick family's deep roots in the local arts scene are further reflected through their daughter's five years of study at Pittsburgh Musical Theater, underscoring a generational commitment to the cultural life and artistic vitality of the city. And whereas founder Richard Johnson is a dedicated neighborhood artist, sharing his work through many community art exchanges, beautifying the West End with sunflower gardens, and volunteering daily to keep the area clean. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Thought Robbers Gallery and its founders, Richard Johnson and Francis Niznick, for their outstanding contributions to the arts, their dedication to the community building, and their ongoing commitment to nurturing creativity across generations. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 24th, 2025 to be Thought Robbers Day, Thought Robbers Gallery Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much. We really just couldn't do this without all the artists who have been so grateful to work with us, and we really like working with the community, and, yeah, it's a, it's a fun thing to do, and it's like brought a lot of meaning to our lives.
And you're located on South Main Street in the West End, which is near Eden's Farm. It's also a worthwhile organization, but what's the address? 438 South Main Street. You just have to check out some of the things that they do there. So, thank you. We're going to take a photo. We're going to take a photo. Do you guys want to come up? You all want to come for the photo? Tom Baker, you want to come forward, please? Do you want to bring everyone? Okay, good. You do. Now we have some more great honorees. There's a lot to, a lot to acknowledge in the city of Pittsburgh. I wish we could give proclamations for every great thing that's, I try to do my share, okay? But for all the great things that are happening in Pittsburgh. And it's very seldom people get acknowledged because we, we don't have that many opportunities to do it just once a week. Whereas, okay, we're going to start, and then, and then I'll read this. You're going to read the names, okay? I have him reading the names. Whereas founded by Allegheny County Councilman Tom Baker, Get Involved Incorporated held its 16th Annual Pittsburgh Service Summit on Wednesday, November 5th at Vellum Fermentation. And whereas Get Involved Incorporated enables student leaders, young professionals, and lifelong learners to make a positive difference in their communities, and to become civically engaged by providing a variety of leadership-focused events, service-oriented programs, and courses of inspiring trainings throughout the region. And whereas awards are given annually to local young professionals ages 21 to 35, I hate to say it, but I have grandkids that fit that crowd. In the nonprofit business and governmental sectors who dedicated their time to and talent to community organizations and who are making a positive difference in the region. And whereas, congratulations to the following individuals, Person of the Year, you're going to read the names.
Okay, we'll do the names. Okay, a lot of these people are here. Lee Davis and Felicia Meisig, Felicia's here, DG Felicia. Emerging Leader Award is Marquise Wheeler, Nvidia Sirti, Marquise is here, Patty Varosco Child Advocacy, Maria Palu Selly, and Kathy Walsh is here. Hi, Captain Kathy. And then Community Leader Award, we got Sheila Talrico and RJ Thompson, who's looking like a member of the Riverhounds today, nice medal on, right?
Go Riverhounds!
Right. Western PA Rising Stars, Derek Hollander, Rasan Brown, Emily Francis is here, Eliana Gomez, County Councilman Dan Grisbick, Kayla Haynes is here, James Hoag, Mondale King, Josh Leonard, Jaime Martinez, Lindsay McDivitt, and Ronan Muller. It's a good group.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Get Involved Incorporated for encouraging young adults to become more active and engaged in their communities, and for organizing the annual Pittsburgh Service Summit. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 24th, 2025 to be Get Involved Incorporated Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'm going to turn it over to you for a second.
Okay.
Who has the Riverhounds medal?
Oh, RJ?
Oh, no.
So these are, so the Service Summit, you got your medal at the event, but RJ was teaching class that night.
Okay, so I just want to say, since you mentioned the Riverhounds, congratulations to our Pittsburgh Riverhounds who won their championship, and Jake Pollak, who has been their biggest champion with season ticket holders since the beginning of the Highmark Stadium, called me and told me that they're doing, so I'm eager to hear what they're going to do for the Riverhounds today.
That's true. That'll be fun, yeah.
So now I'm taking, turning back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement as well, too. We've done this several times together. Well, it's good to be back here. This is the 16th year, so our, our annual celebration with all of you at city council now is eligible to drive because we've been here for 16 years. Sorry, that's a dad joke. I am a dad. But this is an uncontrollably good group of people that we have assembled this year for the Service Summit. Glad that we're always, all 16 years it's been held in the city proper, which we're very proud of. Certainly, the goal of the organization is don't be bored, be on a board, be on a board of directors, care about your community, do things that help people. That is what Get Involved is all about. It's completely volunteer-run. There's no professional staff, but we are able to make amazing things happen throughout the community. We've been doing it for a long, long time. So with that, I just want to quickly introduce, if everyone can just say your name and your favorite thing to be involved with.
Come over to the mic.
This is your big, this is your big shining moment. So Mr. Medal winner, RJ Thompson.
Yeah, I'll have to turn this on. Can you get this one on?
You get to use your own mic, okay?
We want to make sure you're heard.
That's right. So it's, it's really a great group, though, this year. And we had the celebration of Vellum Fermentation, I think, Councilman Shar.
Thank you so much. See the talent of a District 2 resident.
Hi there, everyone. My name is RJ Thompson. I'm an associate professor at Pitt, and I would say my favorite thing to be involved in is education, youth education, and pushing their creativity and critical thinking to the max.
And if I can say, RJ's been the face and spokesman, main spokesman for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation for the better part of twenty-plus years.
Did you say where they live, too?
Oh, he's in Bellevue, yeah.
I'm in Bellevue.
Hi, I'm Josh Leonard, president of Leonard Advisory Group, and I love the most just helping families in the area and encouraging retirees and those transitioning into a new stage in life to take advantage of their newfound free time to help out the community.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marquise Wheeler. I'm the Director of Program Partnerships and Impact at the Boys and Girls of Western PA, and my favorite thing to be involved with is education, whether it be for myself, you know, for funds, or for, you know, professionally, or, you know, providing access to education for the communities that we all, that we serve here. So yeah, I think that, for me, that's, that's what I have.
Hello, I'm Mondale King. I'm a youth engagement specialist.
Hello, I'm Mondale King. I'm a youth engagement specialist. I was a kid, once a part of the violence, now turning around to stop the violence. And that's my favorite part, and what I do is pulling the young kids off the street and showing them that there is a better way into life versus having to be illegal with everything, so.
I'm just gonna say, honey, to that, I wasn't part of the violence, but I am now because I pull kids off the street, too.
And I'm 24, so I didn't have to wait till I was 40 to start.
I'm not saying my age.
Hey, everyone. My name's Rasan Brown. I'm the Youth Assistant Coordinator at the Bradock Youth Project. I also work with Hoop Alliance in the school, in the Woodland Hill School District, and I do a lot for the kids in the community. One of my things, main things that I focus on is provide opportunities for underprivileged youth. A lot of the times, these kids get overlooked at and stuff like that, and I wanna be the one that gives them the opportunity to be successful in the future and stuff like that, have the most, you know, things going on for themselves, but thank you all.
Hi, my name's Kathy Welsh, and I wanted to let the boys go in front of me because they're the reason that I got the Child Advocacy Award. And I always say, I own a business, I don't work for an organization where my job is to be a child advocate. After losing my son Jeremy to gun violence back in 2017, a 13-year-old boy with a stolen gun had taken my son's life just a few blocks from our house in Turtle Creek. And being a longtime resident of Woodland Hills, we all came together and we had to find a way to help the survivors of gun violence, but also help the people that could be violent or may start to be violent. And we've been at it for about eight years. We have made so much, so many strides in our community. I'm so honored to get this Child Advocacy Award. I just feel like that's, the kids just proclaim me to be their advocate. So thank you, Tom. Thank you for all the things you do.
I don't know if I should go after you. That is amazing work that you're doing. My name is Felicia Misick. I am the District Governor for an organization called Rotary. There are more than nine counties. We have 80 clubs, and all the clubs are community-based. They do things locally, regionally, and globally, from water projects to literacy, you name it, and in between. We work with youth all the way to adulthood. So we have clubs in the elementary school called Early Act, in the middle and high school called Interact, and 18 to 35 Rotary Act. And at, after that point, people will join Rotary Clubs. We are global, there are 46,000 clubs in the world. We're in pretty much every country in the world. But I have the privilege and the honor to be the District Governor for southwestern Pennsylvania. I'm very happy about that. So, and just so you know, what I'm most proud of, I love sports and youth. So from football, I started girls' flag football out in my way, and, but with Rotary, it gives me an avenue to serve my community in so many various ways. And I hope, one of the biggest things I like to do is build new leaders. So whether that's from youth to adults, that's where I specialize in, is building leaders, and I can do that through Rotary.
And I wanna say Joe Orvich talks about you constantly and how proud he is of the work that you do.
Well, hi, I'm Felicia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jaime Martinez. I'm the Executive Director of a project called Frontline Dignity, and I'm also, I teach a course on organizing and leadership at Carnegie Mellon. My favorite thing to do is facilitate authentic relationship, because that's gonna save the world, so.
Morning, I'm Kayla Haynes. I work at Variety, the children's charity. I'm also a fellow Rotarian. I like to get involved, I live in Shaler, I'm PTA member, and I also volunteer at my local library. But I always find wherever you live, don't wait for someone else to get involved. It's your community, so you should get involved wherever help is needed.
Agreed. Good morning. My name's Emily Francis. I am the Director of the Greater Pittsburgh Nonprofit Partnership. Good to see you. And we have an event coming up December 5th that is going to create an opportunity in advocacy for nonprofits. And the goal is to have members of elected offices, but also municipal government employees connecting directly with the experts in the communities, many of whom are here, who do the good work every day as in their nonprofit capacity. And so we have 300 dues-paying members of GPNP, another 200 we're connected with through the advocacy efforts, which we don't charge for. But that is a small number of the 8,500 we have in Allegheny County, so looking forward to that.
If I can say, this is, I think, a historic day in City Council history. We have a married couple who both received proclamations today, completely unrelated. So Council President Lavelle gave a proclamation to DJ Afterthought, Ryan Haynes. You might have noticed that Kayla Haynes was also up there for that, that is his wife, and they have CJ together. So I think we have made history today by a married couple getting two completely unrelated proclamations. It was hilarious when they realized they were coming to the same thing. And it's a historic day, I think, in the City of Pittsburgh, potentially. But thank you all for your support of Get Involved. The Service Summit was awesome. We appreciate you all caring about us and caring about the do-gooders, the people that believe they are the helpers and are the helpers in our community. It's a good day to get involved and have a good day in the city and the community. Thanks, Teresa Kelsey. Congratulations on your retirement.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Everyone wanna come up for the photo? I just wanna thank you because after your life, you certainly have created a lot of opportunity for people. Look, he's done this a few times. He's a lot of.
And I believe we have one or two to be read into the record.
Councilmember Kayla Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 14th, 2025, to be George W. Prokot, Prokot, Prokuzovich Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Warwick presents, be it further resolved in recognition of courage, memory, and the promise of a healthier tomorrow, that the city will work with community partners to amplify World AIDS Day messages, support local commemorations, and advance policies that protect health, privacy, and equity for everyone in Pittsburgh.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone, the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which made before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Elena Zetsoff.
Good morning. I am Elena Zetsoff. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. Since Oakland does not have a community center, I'm here today to ask Councilpersons Charlene, Lavelle, and Strasburger to work together to get a warming center in Oakland, one that is publicized and has all the provisions, not just being informally told to drop by the library or museum. And it would be terrific if you all could work towards getting us a community center in Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lena Andrews.
Great, hi, everybody. Good morning, members of City Council. My name is Lena Andrews, and I am here as the CEO of Action Housing, a nonprofit dedicated to ensuring that every Pittsburgher has a safe, stable, and affordable place to live. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today. I'm also a resident of East Liberty, and I've worked with most of you on many projects. So I'm here today to testify about the URA's allocation in the budget and my strong support for, all of its support for affordable housing and for City Council's continued commitment to housing and community development, especially the investments of $5 million in CDBG funds for Bedford Choice, almost $2 million in home funds for affordable housing development, $1 million in CDBG funding for homeownership initiatives, and also $750,000 in URA staffing. We work with the URA almost every day, and I can't tell you how important their work is in supporting affordable housing. So these investments reflect an understanding that housing stability and community revitalization must go hand in hand. However, while we deeply value these commitments, we believe this year's budget presents an important opportunity to adopt a more balanced approach to economic development, one that pairs affordable housing with more robust support for neighborhood-scale economic growth. So our organization sees every day that stable, affordable housing alone cannot sustain a community. Residents also need access to thriving commercial corridors, locally-owned businesses, and jobs that circulate wealth within neighborhoods. When Main Streets deteriorate and entrepreneurs lack capital and technical assistance to launch or grow their businesses, it undermines the very housing investments we are working so hard to preserve and create. And that is why I'm here to testify in support for an additional $2 million in investment in two main areas, one of which is small business investment to support small businesses that are such an important part of our neighborhood Main Streets, and $1 million for neighborhood economic development. Affordable housing is one part of the neighborhood development strategy, but all residents need thriving, commercial districts where they can work, shop, and play. And a lot of our affordable housing developments are located in just this type of commercial corridor, like Penn Avenue, and Ardmore Boulevard and Forest Hills, and most of our buildings are in communities like this. So in closing, I want to reiterate our appreciation for your ongoing support and for the significant housing investments included this year, and for the incredible work of the URA staff to ensure that Pittsburgh is a city for all. We look forward to continuing our partnership with both the administration and council to expand opportunity and to ensure that all of our 90 neighborhoods are places where families can thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Shakoi Scott. Is Shakoi Scott with us? If not, our next speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Santa Biblia, something to read. Dr. Ronaldin Miller, downtown. I'm a candidate for president representing the Global Intelligence Society, a global information intelligence network.net. Benito Juarez neighborhood in Ciudad de Mexico. I think we all need to go to La Presidenta, Doctor Claudia Schonbaum, physicist, Pueblo. Democracia in Mexico, 15 to 20, November 2025, in her Maharinas. Also, Mitte Brandenburg Gate, Noch Bachut. This is German Deutsch in Berlin, Deutschland, Republik. I think we all need to review the former Chancellor, Dr. Angela Merkel, quote, "No Freiheit ohne Demokratie," in her book Freedom 2024. These two have been the most powerful influences on me over the last five years, especially over the last year. I think they are exemplary models for national leadership. The concern of this council, DEI, which includes equity, but my concern is more with equality, 2025 to 2028. So inclusion is primary for incoming and outgoing mayor people. Allegheny on 10 November 2025 was really rah 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 DEI. I think that was more like a political rally than a government budget talk, and I'm reserved about that. He rallied for DEI and reeled against the old ways, I agree, for inclusion. Pittsburgh for everyone. He emphasized that over and over and over again. But, but where were the Indigenous and the Asians and Latins, especially Mexican-Americans and German-Americans? Were they hiding in plain sight? I emphasize the German and Mexican because Germans are number one, German-Americans, and Mexican-Americans are number two, according to the Census Bureau, in terms of ethnic identifications. I think that what we need in the city and across this country is an increased Germanification and Mexification. And one of those involves an attention to the sacred texts, not only the German Bible, but Santa Biblia.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chris Maury.
Hi, sorry I couldn't be there in person. My name is Chris Maury. I live in Squirrel Hell, District 8. I'm here today with and form up, a local non, news nonprofit that reports weekly on City Council and includes surveys to solicit reader feedback and delivers that feedback directly to council. This week, we had a news brief covering the Department of Public Works budget hearing from November 12th, where Budget Director McDevitt mentioned $13 million in water bills, of which only 40% have been paid, and further that the 2026 budget only covered 80% of the projected use in water bills. We asked readers whether they agreed with the statement. The council should not pass the 2026 budget unless it includes enough money to cover the approximately $5 million in existing water bills, as well as the cost of next year's expected usage. 69% of the 124 survey respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that statement, while 16% somewhat or strongly opposed. One resident from Elliott said, invest in the communities, quit spending money on master plans that go into a drawer. Regarding the transfer of water and sewer-related infrastructure being transferred to the Water Authority, we asked the question, the 1995 lease does not specify which infrastructure goes to the Pittsburgh Water Authority. How should the city interpret what's included in this $1 sale? How should the city interpret what's included in this one dollar sale? Forty-one percent said minimize what is transferred, maintain maximum control by the city. Twenty-nine percent said follow industry standards. Sixteen percent said avoid litigation, give enough to prevent lawsuits. Nine percent said maximum separation, completely, complete independence from the Water Authority. And then err on the side of inclusion was six percent. A resident from Friendship, water should remain in the hands of the public, especially as data centers. Nobody asks for our popping up in our county, which will drive up utility prices wholesale. The reporting did mention that the Water Authority was a public organization rather than a private entity, but there's still kind of comments speaking to that. So we will share out the full report over email, and thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good afternoon, Special Agent Sunshine. We're going to stay with that name because that's who I am, in his eyes. His purpose for me, we'll let him reveal why I'm here. We'll let him reveal it. Today I want to talk about living like Christ. Matthew five, fourteen through sixteen says, you are the light that gives light to the world. A city that is built on a hill cannot be hidden, and people don't hide a light under a bowl, they put it on a lampstand so the light shines for all the people in the house. In the same way, you should be a light for other people. Live so that they will see the good things you do and will praise your Father in heaven. I'm going to start a series on inspirations for women, since men are choosing men and God created us for y'all. I'm gonna reach out to women. A woman and inspiration for you guys, for women, comes from Romans twelve thirteen. It says, share with the Lord's people who are in need. Practice hospitality. It's Thanksgiving, you know, the holidays, everybody come together during this time. Why do we not come together year-round? Why do we not reach out to those in need year-round? Why do we wait till it's cold to shelter those who you forced to be homeless on the street? Yeah, I'm targeting y'all because this is what y'all do. I asked somebody in a shelter just yesterday if they took donations, because I'm literally out here on the street trying to help people who are cold, who are hungry. I'm not trying to put praise or give myself a pat on the back, but this is what God has me doing, because people have too much pride. I'm good. I see a man walking shivering like this. He's cold, ain't got no gloves, no hat, nothing. I I I keep stuff for people on purpose, because people need help out here, and y'all are not helping them. It's real bad, real bad and sad. The wisdom for the day comes from Proverbs fifteen fifteen. It says, all the days of the afflicted are evil, but he that is of a merry heart hath a continual feast. I've already had Thanksgiving with the mission for the Marines. They support the homeless out here, and they do it very well. Shout out to Semper Fi. The dinner I had with them was amazing. I even got a free haircut. A lot more children need to know about this mission, because there are a lot of children out here who need their haircut for free. That's the operative word. Father, remind me that your blessings are forever, and I have nothing to fear. Give me a merry heart, I pray. Look at some comedy, y'all. Laugh, laugh away stress. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill twenty-five oh-two, Resolution Providing For An Agreement or Agreements With The Fair Housing Partnership of Pittsburgh For The Implementation And Administration Of Fair Housing Programming And Related Costs In The Amount Not To Exceed Sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Bill twenty-five oh-three, Resolution Amending Resolution seven seventeen of two thousand twenty-two, Which Authorizes The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Human Resources And Civil Service To Enter Into An Agreement With Day Force For Services Relating To The Administration Of The City Of Pittsburgh's Human Capital Management System, Which Includes Payroll And Benefits. This Amendment Will Extend The Agreement By Five Years And Will Add Funding By Increasing The Approved Amount By Two Million Four Hundred Three Thousand Six Hundred Forty-three Dollars For New Total Cost Not To Exceed Five Million Five Hundred Forty Thousand Seven Hundred Fifty Dollars. And Bill twenty-five oh-four, Resolution Providing For An Agreement Or Agreements With Pittsburgh Regional Transit To Allow The City To Participate In The Partner Pass Program For A One-Year Pilot For Calendar Year Two Thousand Twenty-Six At A Cost Not To Exceed Two Hundred Seventy-five Thousand Dollars.
And Councilwoman Karkel, Chair of Public Safety And Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management And Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elgroth presents Bill twenty-five oh-five, Resolution Amending Resolution eight sixty-two of two thousand twenty-four, Which Authorizes The Mayor And The Director Of Public Safety To Enter Into An Amended Agreement Or Agreements With Julata For Software Subscription-Based Client Relations Management Services By Increasing The Total Not To Exceed Amount By Seventy-one thousand ninety-three dollars For A New Total Not To Exceed Two Hundred Seventy-five thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents Over Four Years. Bill twenty-five oh-six, Resolution Amending Resolution seven eighteen of two thousand twenty-two, Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance On Behalf Of The City Of Pittsburgh To Enter An Agreement Or Agreements And Amendments There Too With Computronics USA Inc. For Subscribed Services To Handle Day-to-Day Maintenance And Support Of One-Stop PGH, Including To Address Any Defects That May Arise With The System And To Define Service Level Agreements For Resolution Time Meeting The Needs Of City Of Pittsburgh By Increasing The Approved Amount By One Million Six Hundred Sixteen Thousand Two Hundred Eighty-One Dollars For An Amended Total Cost Not To Exceed Two Million Eight Hundred Forty Thousand Seven Hundred Sixty-three Dollars Over Six Years. Bill twenty-five oh-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eight Seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-four, Effective December third, two thousand twenty-four, Which Authorizes The Mayor, The Director Of Public Works, And The Director Of The Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance On Behalf Of The City Of Pittsburgh To Enter Into An Amended Agreement Or Agreements And Amendments There Too With Cartograph, Now Doing Business As Open Gov, Inc., To Meet The In To Meet The Continuation Of Service Needs Of The City Of Pittsburgh By Extending The Agreement An Additional Three Years And Increasing The Cost By Seven Hundred Seven Thousand Three Hundred Seventy-nine Dollars And Three Cents For A New Total Not For A New Not To Exceed Amount By Two Million Five Hundred Fifty-one Thousand One Hundred Seventy-three Dollars And Fifty-five Cents Over Thirteen Years. And Bill twenty-five oh-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution three thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-four, Authorizing The Mayor, The Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance, And The Director Of Permits, Licenses, And Inspections On Behalf Of The City Of Pittsburgh To Enter An Agreement Or Agreements And Amendments There Too With Computronics USA Inc. To Provide Ongoing Professional Services To Continue Develop And Upgrade The Posse LMS System In Support Of The One-Stop PGH Permitting Program Meeting The Needs Of The City Of Pittsburgh By Increasing The Approved Amount By Three Hundred Thousand Dollars For An Amended Total Cost Not To Exceed Two Million Nine Hundred Seventy-seven Thousand Two Hundred Seventy-eight Dollars Over Six Years.
And Councilwoman Mosley, Chair Of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kahari Mosley presents Bill twenty-five oh-nine, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Office Of Management And Budget To Enter Into A Cooperation Agreement Or Agreements With The City Of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority To Provide For The Leasing Of Five Street Sweepers With Maintenance Including At A Cost Not To Exceed Two Million Two Hundred Ninety-nine Thousand Two Hundred Fifty-seven Dollars And Eighty Cents Over Five Years. Bill twenty-five ten, Resolution Authorizing The Approval Of The Two Thousand Twenty-Six Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts All. Bill twenty-five thirty-seven, Resolution Authorizing The Execution Of A Quit-Claim Deed And Associated Agreements Conveying All Of The City's Right, Title, And Interest In And To That Certain City-Owned Property Located At West Hall Street In The Twenty-seventh Ward Of The City And Designated In The Deed Registry Office Of Allegheny County As Block And Lot Number Seventy-five J seventy-five, Council District Two To The Allegheny County Sanitary Authority In Exchange For Just Compensation. Bill twenty-five thirty-eight, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor, The Director Of Finance, And The Director Of Public Works To Enter Into An Easement Agreement Or Agreements With The Allegheny County Sanitary Authority For Certain Work To Be Performed On Three City-owned Parcels Being Identified By The Allegheny County Department Of Real Estate As Nine E two hundred nine River Alley, Council District One, Seven L thirty-one Beaver Avenue, Council District Six, And Seven M one ten-nine Sprotway, Council District Six At No Cost To The City And To Accept Just Compensation Therefore.
And Councilwoman Kale Smith, Chair Of Recreation Youth And Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair Of Finance And Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill twenty-five eleven, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Service Agreement Or Agreements And Amendments There Too With Whole Law Office For Legal Consulting Services Related To Liquor Licenses In The City In An Amount Not To Exceed Five Thousand Dollars Over One Year. Bill five twelve, or sorry, twenty-five twelve, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of National Church Residences, Parkside Manor Senior Housing LP In An Amount Not To Exceed Eleven Thousand Four Hundred Eight Dollars Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To The Building Underpass At Thirteen Oh Six Brookline Boulevard From A City EMS Vehicle Exceeding The Height Restriction On February first, two thousand twenty-five. Bill twenty-five thirteen, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Patricia Williams In An Amount Not To Exceed Three Thousand One Hundred Twenty-five Dollars Over One Year In Full And Final Settlement Of A Claim For Damage To Her Parked Vehicle From A City Fire Vehicle On August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Bill twenty-five fourteen, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of Brady Patsy And His Attorney Chafin Luhana LLC For A Single Payment In Two Thousand Twenty-five In An Amount Not To Exceed Forty-two thousand five hundred dollars In Full And Final Settlement Of Litigation Filed In The Allegheny County Court Of Common Pleas. Bill twenty-five fifteen, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-seven Of Two Thousand Twenty-three, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three As Amended Entitled, Resolution Adopting And Approving The Two Thousand Twenty-four Capital Budget, The Proposed Two Thousand Twenty-four Community Development Program And The Two Thousand Twenty-four Through Two Thousand Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program By Increasing Calera Street Bridge By Twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars And Increasing Corley Street Bridge By Twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars To Account For Federal Highway Administration Funding Being Received At No Cost To The City Of Pittsburgh. Bill twenty-five sixteen, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant To Chapter One Sixty-six Of The City Code Donation Of City Personal Property, The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of City Planning To Donate Personal Property Valued At Fifteen Thousand Dollars To Lawrenceville Life Links To Transfer Ownership Of The Lawrenceville Life Links Artwork At The Original To The Original Artist. Bill twenty-five seventeen, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-six Of Two Thousand Twenty-one, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one As Amended Entitled, Resolution Adopting And Approving The Two Thousand Twenty-two Capital Budget And The Two Thousand Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program And The Two Thousand Twenty-two Through Two Thousand Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program So As To Decrease Steel City Boxing Association By Five Thousand Dollars And Increase Community Empowerment Association, Inc. By Five Thousand Dollars So As To Fund Specific Public Service Grant Projects Of The Mayor's Office And Authorize A Subsequent Agreement Or Agreements. Bill twenty-five eighteen, Resolution Amending Resolution One Seventy-four Of Two Thousand Twenty-two, Which Authorizes The Mayor And The Director Of The Office Of Management And Budget To Enter Into An Agreement Or Agreements With Commonwealth Press For Services Relating To The Sale Of Officially Licensed And Branded City Of Pittsburgh Merchandise By Extending The Term Through The End Of Two Thousand Twenty-seven At No Cost To The City. Bill twenty-five nineteen, Resolution Amending Resolution Eight Forty-two Of Two Thousand Twenty-four, Which Authorizes An Agreement Or Agreements And Lees Or Leases By And Between The City Of Pittsburgh And First Vehicle Services, A Transdev Company, To Manage And Maintain The City's Vehicle Fleet By Increasing The Authorized Spend By Four Hundred Thousand Dollars For A New Amount Not To Exceed Seventy-two million two hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents Over A Six-Year Period. Bill twenty-five thirty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty-three Of Two Thousand Eighteen, Effective January first, two thousand nineteen As Amended Entitled, Resolution Adopting And Approving The Two Thousand Nineteen Capital Budget And The Two Thousand Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving The Two Thousand Seventeen Through Two Thousand Twenty-two Capital Improvement Program By Reducing Kitchen Of Grace By One Thousand Dollars And Homewood Renaissance Association By Two Thousand Five Hundred Dollars And Increasing Macedonia Family And Community Enrichment Center By One Thousand Dollars And Naomi's Place Transitional Housing By Two Thousand Five Hundred Dollars And Authorize A Subsequent Agreement Or Agreements. Bill twenty-five thirty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-six Of Two Thousand Twenty-one, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one As Amended Entitled, Resolution Adopting And Approving The Two Thousand Twenty-two Capital Budget And The Two Thousand Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program And The Two Thousand Twenty-two Through Two Thousand Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program By Reducing Steel City Boxing Association By Six Hundred Thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, Northside Leadership Conference By Five Thousand Dollars, Pittsburgh National Youth Boxing By Six Hundred Ten dollars and sixty-one cents, And Allies For Health And Well-being By Five Thousand Dollars, And Increasing YMCA Of Greater Pittsburgh-Allegheny By Six Hundred Thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, Macedonia Family And Community Enrichment Center By Five Thousand Six Hundred Ten dollars and sixty-one cents, And Jeremiah's Place By Five Thousand Dollars So As To Fund Specific City Council Public Service Grant Projects And Authorize A Subsequent Agreement Or Agreements. And Bill twenty-five thirty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Fifty-one Of Two Thousand Twenty-five, Which Authorizes The Mayor And The Director Of The City Planning, The Director Of The Department Of City Planning, To Extend A Professional Services Agreement With Bromberg And Associates LLC For Effective Communication Services By Exercising The Contract Option To Extend The Term For Six Months And By Increasing The Total Spend By Seventy-five Thousand Dollars For A New Not To Exceed Amount Of Seven Hundred Three Thousand Nine Hundred Seventy-six dollars.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
I would like to make a motion, sorry I'm finding it, to waive the rules on Bill two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-five thirty-five, so that this this bill appears on this afternoon's agenda.
There's second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill twenty-five thirty-five will be on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. That moves us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill twenty-five twenty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Seven Thirty-five Of Two Thousand Twenty-three, Entitled Resolution Authorizing The Mayor Of The City Of Pittsburgh And The Director Of The Department Of Mobility And Infrastructure To Receive Grant Funding From The Pennsylvania Department Of Transportation's Green Light Go Program In The Amount Of Four Hundred Thirty Thousand Dollars And Thirteen Cents. in the amount of four hundred thirty thousand dollars and thirteen cents to upgrade traffic control switches to increase the amount of the grant award. Bill twenty-five-twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County with respect to salt storage, handling, and loading for the winter seasons of two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six through two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-seven through two thousand twenty-eight, November first to March thirty-first of each year at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-five-twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Tree Pittsburgh to support seasonal tree care in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars over a period of one year. Bill twenty-five-twenty-three. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Corley Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, five hundred ninety thousand dollars, an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill twenty-five-twenty-four. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Calera Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, an increase of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill twenty-five-twenty-five. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed three million, one hundred twenty thousand dollars, an increase of two million, one hundred thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. And Bill twenty-five-twenty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with Kissler Studio LLC for the creation and installation of public art in the Hazelwood Neighborhood at a total cost not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand dollars.
And Councilwoman Wilson, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to waive Rule eight on Bill twenty-five-twenty so it can be heard today, this afternoon.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill twenty-five-twenty will be on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. Now, Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill twenty-five-twenty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Paramount Pursuits LLC for technical assistance services to nonprofits awarded neighborhood economic development grants in need of capacity building for a sum not to exceed forty-one thousand dollars for the payment of the costs thereof. Bill twenty-five-twenty-eight. Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into licenses or temporary easements as necessary for the city to perform maintenance and/or removal of the Lawrenceville Life Links Charm Bracelet artwork without cost to the city. Bill twenty-five-twenty-nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the City of Planning, Director of the Department of City of Planning, to enter into an agreement and/or contract with Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of utilizing an Americor Vista Vista in the Department of City Planning at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars over one year. And Bill twenty-five-forty-five. Resolution authorizing the council precedent to approve legal service requests made by individual council members subject to limited delegation of authority.
And for myself?
Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill twenty-five-thirty. Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Bill twenty-five-thirty-one. Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Bill twenty-five-thirty-two. Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting pay request on behalf of the Law Department for Anthony Bylon per acting pay policy revised in June, two thousand eighteen. And Bill twenty-five-thirty-six. Communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, submitting a special report on the condition of the citywide vehicle fleet dated November, two thousand twenty-five.
In motion to read, receive, and file?
So move.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All four have been read, received, and filed. That moves us on to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill twenty-four-ninety-six, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-four-thirty-five. Resolution providing for the sale of property, the sale of certain property acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at tax sales. Items A through double A. Seventeen oh three Cliff Street, Council District Six. Seventeen oh seven Cliff Street, Council District Six. Five fifty-two eighteen Rosetta Street, Council District Nine. Zero Fram Street, Council District Nine. Zero Hale Street, Council District Nine. Zero Dursen Street, Council District Nine. Eighty-three sixty-six Breslin Street, Council District Nine. Eighty-three seventy-three Vidette Street, Council District Nine. Forty-six forty Chatsworth Street, Council District Five. Zero Winston Street, Council District Five. Eleven Muskego Way, Council District Two. Zero Boggs Avenue, Council District Two. Twelve thirty Crucible Street, Council District Two. Nine oh four Valonia Street, Council District Two. Eight oh seven Lorenz Avenue, Council District Two. Thirty-one twenty-four Sutherland Street, Council District Two. Eight forty-one Lovett Way, Council District One. Nine oh nine Morrison Street, Council District Six. Zero Boyle Street, Council District Six. Forty-one thirty-six Franklin Road, Council District One. Twenty-three forty-four California Avenue, Council District One. And twenty-three forty-eight Council California Avenue, Council District One. Bill twenty-four-fifty. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tatiana McCosco in an amount not to exceed five thousand, ninety dollars over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her property on Beechwood Boulevard from a felled city tree on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill twenty-four-ninety-seven. Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-four-sixty-eight. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for purposes of establishing responsibilities related to the inspection of city-owned highway tunnels in conformance with the NTIS at no cost to the city. And Bill twenty-four-sixty-nine. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with STV, Inc. for costs associated with preliminary engineering for the Bloomfield Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed six hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents reimbursable at one hundred percent.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilperson Robert Charlin presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill twenty-four-ninety-eight, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-four-forty-seven. Resolution amending Resolution ninety-three of two thousand twenty-five, providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPO ETC, required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates, and providing for payment of the costs thereof. This will extend the term for two years and increasing the not-to-exceed amount by one hundred ninety thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill twenty-four-ninety-nine. Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-four-seventy. Resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of finance, and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to place a covenant upon Oliver Bathhouse as required by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, which provided funds for the Oliver Bathhouse rehabilitation.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill twenty-five, twenty-five hundred. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-four-forty-eight. Resolution amending Resolution seven seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with First Street Technology US LLC for subscription to Risk Factor database for all data and hazard layers for all perils and all parcels in the City of Pittsburgh, enabling support of city departments and planning for weather-related hazards by increasing the approved amount by two hundred forty thousand dollars for a total cost not to exceed two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars over five years. And Bill twenty-four-forty-nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with City Program, a division of Brainy for HIPAA-protected information health training and other training for IMP staff at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars over three years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kahari Mosley presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill twenty-five-oh-one. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two-twenty. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a bill or bills of sale, assignment, and indenture with Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority doing business as Pittsburgh Water for leased property pursuant to the July nineteen ninety-five capital lease agreement for total amount not to exceed one dollar.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, just briefly, as, as a notice to the public, I'll just draw your attention to the post-agenda that I held last week on the idea of asset transfers of water systems and the public hearing that was held on Tuesday of last week, and the discussion at standing committee last Wednesday. Now, it's the clerk's office to bring forward my comments from last standing, last week's standing committee into the, the final minutes here for final vote. My, my colleagues know where I stand. I am opposed. I voted no last week, and I'll be voting no today, but I'll, I'll leave my comments at that since we had robust discussion last week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any, Council Mosley?
Yeah, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for, for her leadership. I will, I share many of, of the concerns and really appreciate the work that she's done. To brief me, I will be voting in the affirmative today based on legislation that we are working on and hoping to introduce in the very near future that will add additional guardrails. And I've been not formal, official, legal advice, but folks I really have a lot of respect for, you know, have given me some guidance to think that the legislation that we have been discussing to add additional guardrails around leasing management and avoiding a Viola-type situation in the future will be able to stand up if challenged. And that is the reason why I will be voting in the affirm, in the affirmative today. If I didn't get those assurances over the past week, you know, I would be joining Councilwoman Gross and not voting in, in the affirmative today. But I do respect her position and the work that she's done, as well as her willingness to work with my office to add additional guardrails moving forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. And I just want to say, I I actually want to vote with Councilwoman Gross because we have been through this PWSA issue for a very long time together. And, and hearing her comments last week, it really made a really good case of, you know, not voting in favor. But after talking to Councilwoman Mosley and, and others, and I am waiting for something from the Law Department, which doesn't give me much confidence that I never received on my vote today, but at the same time, knowing that Councilwoman Mosley is going to work on something that will address some of the concerns that I have, then I'm going to vote. Because I'm afraid not to vote for it too at the same time. We're in a really difficult situation. Because I'm afraid not to vote for it too at the same time. We're in a really difficult situation, and I wish it wasn't down to the wire in the last minute here where we had to make some decisions because it puts us in a bad situation and, you know, makes us want to vote in, in the negative and not in the affirmative, so. But knowing that there'll be some assurances coming forward to make sure the public's protected and their interest is protected, then I'll vote for it today. So, thank you, Councilman Mosley. And thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
I have actually been thinking long and hard about this since our last discussion. I'm still very unhappy that this never, that, that as the city, we never addressed the issue of private sewer lines for, for our residents who may not even know that they have private sewer lines. And also, again, without a, a clear legal opinion, it, it is not clear to me how we can pass legislation about the management of an asset that we do not own. So if we pass ownership of that asset over to PWSA, I just, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't see how we can then dictate what they can do with their asset in the same way that we have no control over what, you know, people's gas, du, like, I, I just... So I am gonna, I am gonna vote no today. I, and I also have to say that I don't, apart from, you know, maybe some back and forth between the city and PWSA about who's responsible for some water lines in the parks and things like that. I also don't really see what the, what the, the advantage is to, to making this transfer. I just don't, I, I just haven't been convinced, and I have been in a number of meetings. You know, I understand that, 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 that lots of work has gone into this, and I appreciate that, but I also, you know, in, especially around the sewer lines, obviously, in my district, and specifically in the neighborhood I live in, we have had lots of issues with PWSA and their, their ability to deliver on promises around our sewer system. And so I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this today.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Seeing none, you've heard the reading and title of the bill. Well, we did that part. The bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I did want to just take a moment to have a, a moment of silence for Carmen Brown. And then I was gonna say a few words.
Thank you. We can have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just wanted to take a, a moment to reflect on the life of Carmen Brown. I got a call this morning from Tracy Baton, who many of you know, who actually went to middle school with, with Carmen and, and knew her extremely well. I didn't realize that, that she had been sick, had been battling illness in, in, in recent times, and, and admittedly, you know, she was, she was not my biggest fan. You know, she was often very critical of me, but I think that emphasizes the importance of the democratic process and the democratic spirit and everybody having a voice. And I know she worked hard for the things that she believed in, was very active in the community, but, you know, she would give, give me credit when she thought I deserved it as well, so. She was an equal opportunity critic and an equal opportunity, you know, activist of the things that she believed in. And, you know, I, I wish her a peaceful journey and, and send my sincerest condolences to her family, friends, and, and loved ones, and, you know, it's a sad day in, in the city, and, you know, her, her spirit and her presence will be missed, you know, particularly amongst those in, in the grassroots activist community.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
I'd just say, I met Carmen probably about thirty, thirty-five years ago. We were involved in school activities, and during that time, she was a pistol back then. I mean, she really was. She did a lot of stuff. But advocating and working with her, I don't know if people realize this, but she was involved. I wrote the Parent Community Engagement Policy for Pittsburgh Public Schools with Bob Salnatro and a few other people, and she was one of the people that was actively involved in that. She cared tremendously about people. We were on different political pages most of the time. We didn't do a lot of things quietly. We did most of the things that we did together. We did either rallies or protests or something. But she was somebody who I knew, wherever, wherever we were, whatever the issue was, even though we may have disagreed, I knew she cared deeply about people. And I just really want to offer her condolences as well to her family, her sister, her children, and all the people that are gonna miss her, because she was, she was a leader in a lot of things. And I, I will say that she gave me a hard time a lot of times, but, but I knew that was because she cared. And so that helped me stay focused and working with her, and I know that she's gonna be, she was a force to reckon with, and she's gonna be missed terribly by a lot of people. So, wish her well, or wish her, that she rests in peace. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, members? Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a huge congratulations to our striking Post Gazette workers on their victory at the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. The PG has been ordered to reinstate the contract. They went back into work today. It was a very emotional rally. They went in the building. We'll see if the PG does what it should have done. This has been three years that, that these folks have been on strike. And, yeah, it was, it was really something else to, to watch them go back into work today. And, yeah, I hope that, I hope that we can turn the page on this very ugly chapter in our media history here in Pittsburgh, and that, and that all those folks, those reporters and designers and all, all those folks can, will be back at work soon. And I'll have some editorials maybe that I'll have to submit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I should also mention the, the Riverhounds and their championship again, and I just want to congratulate them. And I want to thank Director Pollock for making sure that I was aware of their victory. Well, I was doing some things in, in the district this week. And I, I know that he's going to do something to celebrate. I'm not sure what it's gonna be, but I think Pittsburgh's gonna celebrate as we should for a victor, a victorious team, a team of champions. And thank you to the Riverhounds for continuing to make sure that we're champions. And I do have to point out that their home is in District Two, at least currently, so. I just want to congratulate them and thank them for making Pittsburgh proud.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Mosley?
There was one other thing I, I wanted to mention. I know over the course of the weekend, there's been a lot of media and social media, you know, chatter about light-up night and, you know, incident with a group of young people, I believe, in Market Square. And I have reached out to the REACH team, who did an exemplary job managing that situation. And, and I'm waiting to get a report back from, from what happened. You know, I know there was a viral video that I believe a woman from Ohio posted that's, you know, really exploded, and, and so, you know, I want to let the public know that I'm been making calls and trying to find out, you know, exactly what happened and make sure we have all the facts before we make any statements, you know, and, 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 you know, make any judgment about exactly what happened that night. But I do want to thank Iwadeja Young from the REACH team for reaching out to me this morning. He was on the scene and, and, and trying to keep the calm and, you know, working with the young people in Market Square. And is definitely one of the people that really knows what happened and looking forward to that briefing later today from him.
Thank you very much. Anything else? If not, we have meeting announcements this afternoon with sessions at twelve and twelve forty-five. Council will hold a briefing on Bill twenty-one oh-nine as relates to registered community organizations. Also, this afternoon at one-thirty, council will meet for our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at twelve-thirty today. Then, on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at ten a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and the Urban Development Authority chaired by Councilman Mosley. Also, on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at one o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bills twenty-five eleven, twenty-five twelve, twenty-five thirteen, and twenty-five fourteen as relate to litigation. And then, Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at one-thirty, council will hold budget hearings for Pittsburgh Water and the Pittsburgh Land Bank, also chaired by Councilman Mosley. Lastly, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday, November twenty-seventh and Friday, the twenty-eighth, all council and clerk's offices will be closed. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.